You're not hearing me?
We can hear you.
I know you can't.
Do you want us to hold off?
We can hear you. It's louder than it ever has been. There.
I'll talk quieter.
No, now it's gone.
That's good. Okay.
Are we good? Are we good back there, you think?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Okay, so fantastic. Can we go on to item number two? A pre-application meeting for a subdivision on 18 Coalcord Avenue. Somebody want to speak to that?
Yes, I would. Maybe what I'll do is just kind of start us how we are doing, why we're doing this again, right? Because we had a pre-application meeting a little while ago. There is the requirement to do a public information meeting within 30 days of having that initial pre-application meeting. Or you can do it on both. You can do them at the same time. We did not do it initially at the same time when we did the pre-app meeting, and then we were going to do it within 30 days. And unfortunately, Jim could not make it at that time. So unfortunately, we have to start the whole process all over. So we're doing a pre-application meeting, or the pre-application subdivision plan meeting right now. And then after Jim goes into detail on what this proposed subdivision is, then, and if you have any further questions, then we'll actually open it up and have a public informational meeting for the same thing.
Okay.
So Jim, I think it's all yours. And I will say, maybe even what I can just say for the public, the purpose of the pre-application review process is to provide an opportunity for the developer to explain the proposed plan. The review also allows for comments from the board that could be helpful to the developer prior to the expenditure of substantial sums of money on surveying and engineering. That's from the ordinance.
Okay, so Jim Doriski from Garland Doriski Engineering Surveying. I'm representing Camden RXL, the owner's John Rockwell, for the proposed Coalcord Avenue subdivision, which is a subdivision into three lots of what is now shown as tax map 118, lots 85 and 86. Although it's two tax parcels, it is contiguous land in the same ownership as the term that's used in the subdivision ordinance and statute. So it's considered one parcel in terms of subdivision law. So because it's being turned into three lots, it requires subdivision review. We aren't proposing any development at this time at all. There's an existing building that was subject of site plan review and a recent amendment that was approved. And that building will be on what's called Lot 1. It gets all of its utilities, sewer water and power from Lime Rock Street. And it gets its required frontage on Lime Rock Street. The other two parcels get their frontage on Coalcord Avenue. You can see the configuration looks a little odd. The reason for that is so that they, both of those lots, 2 and 3, can have the required, at least 200 feet of road frontage. It's a little over 400 feet on Coalcord Avenue. We're providing an easement over proposed Lot 2 to proposed Lot 1 so that both of these parcels will be able to use this entrance for access so that we won't be creating an additional entrance on Coalcord Avenue. That's the idea behind that. Again, it's, oh, I should also note that this is in the industrial zone and there's no residential uses allowed. So by default, the development of lots 2 and 3 will require coming to the planning board. So, you know, as far as, there were some waivers that were requested and approved the last time we did this for things like stormwater management plans and all that because we don't know what the development's going to be. There's no proposed development, so there wouldn't be any way to know how to do that at this point. All we're doing, and the reason why we're required to come before the board at this point, is we're dividing the property, but there's no development. We're just making three conforming lots that meet the zoning requirements for this zone. But that's all. All the improvements and the use for Lot 1 where the building is already provided for.
Any more questions? Jim?
Can you explain the changes? I mean, in this deed, it talks about condos. So is it currently divided as condos?
No, he, there's more than one parcel in that deed. And Camden RXL in one deed got all this land and a unit in a condominium on the other side of the road. So that's unrelated. It's in the same deed, but it's a separate parcel.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, condominium was for this, was on this property over here.
So if the lot across the street is the same deed, same ownership, you're actually dividing it into four lots?
No, because if you look up the definition of a tract or parcel of land, land that's separated by a road created before 1971 by someone other than the developer is considered a separate tract.
I actually used that once.
That was impressive. Any other questions?
So you say you don't have any, right now you don't have any knowledge of the type of use that would go on those lots, development that would happen?
The owner's plan is to market these two lots and keep this one and lease it.
Okay.
That's his plan for right now. So he has no idea who will buy that. And, you know, maybe someone will want to buy both of them and undo that division and make it a bigger lot or something, you know? But we have no way of knowing what will happen there.
I'm just, I guess I'm wondering what the logic of the subdividing into three lots, is it just for market value?
Yeah.
To get more money from the sale?
Yeah, I think just the idea that three lots are worth more than two, kind of a thing. But maybe not enough to everyone. I mean, like I said, someone might need more room and decide they want to buy both of these and come back to the planning board and do an amendment to get rid of this line.
Right. I think that's a good point Jim brings out. And we talked about it at the first pre-application meeting, the setback on what would be, what's that lot, this?
Three.
Lot 3.
Yeah.
The setbacks involved there are quite substantial, especially from the residential lots.
Right, because there's a 50-foot setback for non-residential uses of budding a residential district. So there's a bigger setback on this one.
And then if you look at the size line setback over there, is that 10 or is that 20?
It's 25.
22, 20, 20. Yeah.
About what, 75 feet of usable space?
I think we can't, got to that, I think, figured that out the last time.
Yeah, I don't remember.
It's, so just...
The thing you pointed out last time was it looks about as big as this building. So you could put a comparable building on this lot as to what's on that lot.
Yeah.
And the setbacks are for structures, so you could still have paved areas within the setback areas.
And there is wetlands, just so everyone knows, the wetlands are shown on the plan. There is some significant amount of wetland up on that, especially on Lot 3.
Most, we've done that mapping now. It's not on this plan, but it will be on the final plan. But most of this area is wet.
I guess for me, one question I have, and I'm not a planning board member, but I'm staff here, so I have concerns in, kind of in the area, the streams that run down through, like Belmont and as you go down to the harbor. The flows that we get in there are pretty significant.
Yep, and they go through my basement, too.
It's a filtering system.
After your basement, they come into my basement.
Right. I send rubber duckies down your way.
And I just want to, I know we have standards in the, you know, we have standards in the subdivision ordinance for stormwater. But that's really, I think it really, when you start actually contemplating development and where houses are being located and where driveways are and where roads are being built. In this case, we're not doing any of that. This is just, you know, lot lines. And maybe, Jim, I don't know if you could touch base on it, what you could do or they could do as part of the subdivision plan and approval to ensure that we don't have significantly increase off...
Runoff.
Runoff off the site. Is there a way to?
I mean, you could have a note, I guess, that refers to the site plan requirements and the fact that it's an industrial zone. There's no residential uses allowed.
Right.
So any development that happens there is going to require site plan review, which would include addressing stormwater issues. We could put on a note on the plan about that. But to me, right now, you know, all we're doing is dividing land and making the lots meet the zoning requirements. This whole, I mean, we're showing the edge of what's kind of the actively used, traveled way in gravel area. But if you see these contours, you can tell that this is actually the back edge of the gravel. It's just kind of grown in with grass a little more now.
Yeah.
And by looking at, doing the boundary survey and looking at some of the older plans that Tibbetts has, I would guess it's been that way since the 50s or 60s.
Yeah.
And so if anything, you know, I mean, this, the gravel and the runoff there has been that way for a really long time. So, but I guess the biggest point is right now we're not proposing to add any additional runoff. So I mean, I think the appropriate time to address that is when there's development that's proposed. It's going to create more, either create more runoff or give you an opportunity to do some grading to make it go where you want it to.
That's fair.
I mean, it seems like there's a greater level of protection for the town by virtue of the fact that this is an industrial town because any development that may want to happen is going to have to come before site plan review and meet all the criteria in a way that if this was a residential property, it wouldn't necessarily
Right.
Have that same level of oversight, right? And I don't see how we can ask people, there's, all they're doing is putting lines on a piece of paper. They're not touching that site in terms of construction at all.
But we can put a note on the plan about that fact.
It seems like a note on the plan would be more respectful to, in marketing it, so that...
Right, would be aware, anybody would be aware of that.
Someone's aware.
Yeah.
And just so everyone knows, how, what the standard reads in the, if and when someone does develop on the site for stormwater, the standard in the ordinance, adequate provisions shall be made for surface drainage so that removal of stormwaters will not, I don't know what that means, removal of stormwaters. I didn't write this. Will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on neighboring properties downstream water quality, soil erosion or the public storm drain system. Wherever possible, onsite absorptions of runoff water shall be used to minimize discharges from the site. Drainage facilities shall be designed for 25-year storm frequency. So I think...
Isn't that what wetlands are for?
Well, in this case, we could probably, they could probably do some underdrained, underdrained stormwater treatment once that happens. So I think we can address that in site plan review when we get to that point eventually.
And are there any, there are no underground storage tanks on the property or anything like that that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of. But I've seen a bunch of old plans that Tibbetts had. There's nothing to believe you to believe it were, but it was. The only thing that I've seen on old plans that's ever been here was a building that was actually back on those coastal opportunities properties. That was part of it, and then they sold that lot off.
I see.
But I haven't seen anything that suggests there was anything ever there.
No.
They had a ball field there or something, wasn't there?
That's what I heard, heard that today from someone, actually.
People just put softball there.
Yep.
He took all the waste out to Lincolnville. And there was a, I think it's a brownfield site next to Dean and Newglieson. So that's where all the barrels were.
Okay.
It was part of the manufacturing that it went to Lincolnville.
And just, I'm not aware of any phase one environmental assessments that have been done on the property. One, a couple of things we need to determine at the conclusion of the pre-app meeting would be determine contour intervals for the final plan. I mean, we got them kind of, we got one...
Before you go with that, I just wanted to ask a few more questions.
Sure.
That's okay. Has any thought, it may not be a popular opinion among all here in the room, but have you, any thought for requesting a zoning change? To go with a mixed-use type operation?
We have considered it. I don't know if...
I think Jeremy likes to keep it industrial, but there may be, you know, some opportunity there because it's so close to the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've read the ordinance on how zone changes work and, you know, anyone can really petition the select board for a zone change. A property owner can, a butters can, I can. At this point, I would not recommend, I mean, the town of Camden has fairly limited commercial space. We don't have any real industrial space. I don't envision, I think the industrial name probably, I don't think we'll get heavy industry, right, in Camden.
Yeah.
But I do think we need to keep properties available for
Right.
More commercial use, heavier use.
Comprehensive plan, advocate.
I read through that and advocated, actually, I did this just yesterday. And there, a section in there actually contemplated the town, and some of you were on the board when we did the comp plan. There is a portion in that that talks about at this location actually contemplating...
Closing the street?
Removing the street. Giving the street to the abutting property owners to actually make a more, you know, a larger development site. That's in the comp plan.
Make it more viable for industry to...
Make it more viable as a, we don't have commercial park in town. We don't have an industrial park in town. This is kind of it. So that's what it talks about in the comp plan that was approved by the planning board, the select board and the voters. But I don't envision that happening anytime soon.
Yeah, just, you know, from, again, I do live in the neighborhood, but they, we get a lot of heavy traffic down Coalcord Avenue. You know, heavy trucks coming in, they're going to PG Willy's and down to the recycling center and other things like that. So there's a lot of wear on that road.
Yeah.
It's not, it's a lot...
Is there a reason they do that? Is it a cutoff?
They closed Curtis Ave to the truck traffic. So what they're coming, they're coming from, you know, they're coming down Union Street and then they're turning right on Coalcord. And I'm not sure why. I guess it's because from the other side coming down Lime Rock is that hard turn. Yeah, the hard, sharp turn. I don't know where else you would turn.
I mean, yeah.
But Coalcord is now the thoroughfare for the big trucks. And that affects 1, 2, 3, 4 residential properties right on, you know, towards the Union Street side. And then, of course, going down Lime Rock, too, there's residential neighborhoods all around.
That was some of the thinking behind that closing the street for, so that there'd be no more through traffic on Coalcord.
But the trucks would still be able to go on it, right? I mean...
Depending if they only permitted access from Lime Rock.
Right, I mean, that would be site plan and all that stuff. I guess what I can look at that not in, I mean, just in terms of are there things we can do at intersections? I mean, we're, did Urban Tactical work there today, right?
We have like this, there's like a, on the Camden side, the downtown side of Coalcord, I think it's Baba and Uzi's place. Right on the corner, there's a big pothole. And then trucks go there and they get stuck. They turn, they cut across, they hit his yard. And then they get stuck on either ice in the winter or, and...
So that's what I'm wondering, if maybe I can meet up with Rick Seibel over there and just kind of look at it from a, just a bigger picture. Can we do things to improve some of the turning radiuses in other locations so that we can maybe even look at not allowing truck traffic on that road?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just saying, I haven't, I've never looked at it, but that's, I would think that's kind of forward-thinking and we should look at things like that if we can to protect neighborhoods.
Yeah. Okay, that's it for me.
I'll work on that.
All right.
Do you, anything else?
More questions? At what point do you want to open this up to the public? Do you want to go through these criteria first?
First, I think we ought to, before we do the public, I think we should go through the, make sure we determine the contour intervals. We're going to do a foot. I mean, that's what they're on the plan. Are there any other additional submissions that you believe are required?
No, I mean, we have actually been through this list once already, haven't we?
We have.
Yes.
We have.
And kind of made decisions about all of the things on this list at the previous meeting.
I don't think everyone was here at the previous meeting, though, right? Matt, were you here at the first meeting? Okay.
I wasn't.
I think you have to act as if that meeting didn't...
Okay, all right, okay. So, all right, let's go through it then. Other contour intervals for the final plan. Do we see those on there?
Yep, in the one slide.
Okay. Do we think any more additional submissions should be required?
No.
Either of you?
How about that document that's going to have the wetlands on it? That's going to be submitted to us.
Up on the final plan.
Okay. So we're going to have to ask for it now.
So so long as it's on the final plan?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And then the next one would be about the site walk. And what we ought to do is we should just, in my opinion, accept the minutes that we had all approved as the minutes of the site walk and that would suffice for the site walk. Does anyone have any issues with that?
No, I think we're all there at the site walk. Okay. Do we need an outside consultant to advise us for this project?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Do we, so do we need a public hearing over and beyond? Do we need a public hearing? Does anybody feel...
You can make that, Paul, I think the last time you said you didn't, we didn't feel it was necessary, but I...
Heard from the public, yes, but...
I recall one of these meetings here seeing half a dozen people from the public in the audience.
They, they received...
Public informational meeting tonight. And that's what you decided before because you were going to have that.
That, exactly right.
Yeah, I mean, does that, is that going to be, that effectively serves the same purpose as a public hearing?
No, butters all received notice.
Correct.
Certified mail, so...
And the meetings are all also open to the public. It just...
Okay.
And will take comment from the public, too. It's just not a formal public hearing that has to be noticed like normal.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
You want to vote on that, I think?
Okay, just, then make a motion that we don't need a separate public hearing for this project. Anybody going to second that?
No.
Would some of you like to have a public hearing?
I think you said a second public hearing. You mean something...
A second for, do I have somebody who's willing to second that?
There you go.
So just...
Are we considering, this is a public hearing. We're considering this.
It's a public informational meeting, not a public hearing.
It's been noticed, just the same as a public hearing would have been.
So that means neighbors, will they be getting another notice to come?
If you held another hearing, yes, they would probably get another notice.
But everybody, everybody who might have some interest or concern about this project, who's in a butter, has been noted. And they have the opportunity to be here tonight.
Yes.
And we're going to have the opportunity to hear from them.
Yes.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Yes.
Is, does, is, can we decide on the public hearing after we've heard from the public about whether we need a separate one?
I think that's fair. We can do that if you'd like.
Reasonable thing to do.
I would feel comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's hard for us to make that determination before we know...
Sure. Yep, what people's issues are. Yep.
Do you want to withdraw your motion then?
I guess I'm withdrawing the motion, yes. For right now. Thank you, Junie. Okay. Any requests for waivers? That's not applicable.
They're here, yeah, there are.
Okay, okay.
Last page of your packet.
Back on the very last page of your new packet. So... Stormwater was one issue because they didn't know what was going to be constructed or developed on the property. The utilities, is it for the same reason, Jim?
Right.
All of those are for the same reason.
Right.
So... Want to go through these one by one?
Okay, okay. Okay, so submission requirements that are requesting to be made.
Waived.
Waived, sorry. A performance guarantee meeting the requirements of Article 10.
I propose we waive that based on the fact that there will be no, no building.
No proposed building.
No proposed building at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just a division of property lines.
Building no roads, building nothing. No infrastructure.
No infrastructure.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Say aye, so that's 5-0 in favor of this one. So Appendix B4E, a stormwater plan showing ditches, culverts, catch basins, detention or retention areas. Do we think that we should give them a waiver for that?
I would... I would suggest that we make a notation on the plan that it should be, it should be brought up with any development on this project, any further development on this project, just so it's not a loss.
That's not a problem. I've already got that down. That'll be on the file.
I get it on the record, too, is good.
Yep.
Okay.
We would be waiting in the requirement to show all those things.
Right, on this plan.
Here just making a request that the final plan have a note that identifies the fact that because of this zoning and development on these properties will require site plan review and will require, I've got a note to myself to look at the site plan review ordinance and quote something out of that about stormwater. So that'll all be on the final plan.
Ready for development.
So anybody who wants to see that and know that they're going to be subject to that.
So to reword my motion is, is we would waive the stormwater plan on this proposed subdivision with the understanding that any further construction or development of the stormwater plan be addressed.
Would that be a note to the understanding?
That would be a note that it will be as such on the plan.
Yes.
How you doing, Junie? You got all that?
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Absolutely.
Aye.
Say aye, so 5-0 in favor. Okay. And the last one, Appendix B4F, the location of all proposed utilities, including electrical cable, water and sewer. So comfortable waiving those?
Yeah, we don't have any buildings planned, so I guess it...
And no utilities proposed, so...
And do you have existing utilities shown?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're kind of waiving that because there aren't any proposed utilities. It's not applicable.
Right.
Right? So I'm making a proposal that we make a waiver for the plan having to show the location of all proposed utilities, given that there are none.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so 5-0. Okay.
This is the second, I'm sorry.
Ethan?
Just to step ahead.
Okay, so we've waived all those submission requirements and dotted our i's and crossed our t's. Okay. So I think the final thing we have to do here is discuss any issues related to the approval criteria that the applicant should consider in preparing the final plan. We certainly had a couple of requests made of you that you've agreed to put on there. Is there anything in addition?
I don't think so.
That the board would like to see on the final plan? Is there anything that hasn't been addressed?
Not in addition, so, so you, you agreed wetlands will be on the final plan?
And the notes.
And, and the notations we've made.
I think so.
Anybody?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm getting nods, okay.
I mean, keep in mind, in, in the approval standards, when it talks about wetlands, it does say they have to be shown on that of final approved plan, so, I mean, I think Jim's got that under, under control.
Already got them on the plan, it's just not on this one.
Yeah, yep.
It's a limelight issue. All right. Can we open up the meeting to members of the public at this point? Would that be an appropriate time to do so?
I think that's perfect. And just so everyone knows, and I'll just get this out there because people may be listening, and what the, what the public informational meeting is for, the public informational meeting shall be held following the initial presentation by the developer, and shall be held the same night or within thirty days at the option of the developer. The meeting provides an opportunity to explain the project to abutters and to answer questions outside the formal review process. The meeting may produce useful information for the developer through local knowledge, and may provide an opportunity to address issues and concerns prior to a formal planning board review. Notice needs to be sent via certified mail to abutting property owners, and we did do that.
Okay. Shall I read the, read the blurb? I need to read the-
First, that's a public hearing, so this is not a public hearing, it's not relevant.
Okay, okay.
And we can just, I think, maybe start taking comment from the public. I think Jim clearly detailed what this proposal is, I'm not sure he needs to regurgitate that for the public that may be here, if the public wants him to, they can, but I guess I'll maybe step aside and let some folks from the public, if they want to come-
We want people to sign in and announce their names and all that?
Yep, we'll get their name and all that, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, okay. Thank you, gentlemen. So, at this point, we're opening up the public information meeting, if there's anybody from the public who'd like to come up and speak, now, now's your chance.
Have you seen this plan?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Again, if you've got anything to say, we'd really like you to be here and talking to us.
And we'll take your name.
Lisa Burgess.
Are you Lisa Burgess?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I will write you down. Have a seat.
She's the owner of Rankins.
Brave man.
Come on now.
He wouldn't have a tag question, Jeannie.
Did you just question Jeannie?
Yes, she, yeah.
Shame on you, Jeremy.
Yeah, my name is Lisa Burgess, and I am from Rankins, one of the abutters. And I guess my only concern is, I know we have one building that's over the line a little bit, that they found, three feet. The building's been there since the sixties. I don't know what you do in that case, but that's only, that's my only concern right now. I know there's a lot of wetlands there, 'cause I know there's a stream right near where our property is, so...
Are you saying one of your buildings-
Yes.
Is over this property line?
Yes.
And you're concerned that somebody who buys a property might have an issue with it, is that, is that the-
I, I don't know, if they will or not.
You wanna speak to that?
Yes.
Yeah, please do.
I've been at with Lisa, actually, already, that's why she's seen the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the whole reason why we're doing this over again is because we finished the boundary survey right after we had the pre-app meeting and the site walk, and when we finished it, we did discover that the, one of their buildings was, it's not even, I think we proposed moving the line two feet, so I don't remember how much it's over, but it might be a foot or a half a foot or something. There's one building that runs parallel to this line. There's also an encroachment here by Coastal Opportunities with their pavement that comes over a little bit, but they're both really small amounts, so, I talked to John Rockwell about it, and what we decided to do is do boundary line agreements and just shift the line over so that there's no encroachment anymore, basically.
Nice.
So, and that's what we're gonna do with her, the, I, I was gonna ask you when I saw you, if you knew what was going on, because for one thing, right after that happened, I went on vacation, and then John's lawyer went on vacation right after that, so things got delayed, and then John said, I think I'm just gonna hold off on this till fall, which is when I called Jeannie and said, we're not gonna come to that next meeting, and I forgot about the whole thing with the public informational meeting and how it had to happen within thirty days, or you've gotta start over, or I hadn't even thought about that fact. So, that's why I didn't come to the last meeting, because we thought we were waiting till fall to go ahead with this, but then he decided, well, let's just go ahead and do it. So, I wrote descriptions, and we've got a plan ready to do those agreements, but, and I sent them to his attorney, but I called her today to find out where that's at, to try to figure out when we're gonna wanna go to final plan, and didn't hear back from her, but I'm guessing we won't be ready until at least, she gave me the impression that I think those are just about done and ready to be signed. I showed that, those proposed lines to Lisa and to the executive director of Coastal Opportunities, and everybody's okay with it, so, the, so, there's different ways of dealing with that, and whether or not it would be approved with an encroachment, I just didn't even wanna go there, I told him, let's get this straightened out so there are no encroachments, we'll get the boundary line agreements done, signed, recorded in the registry of deeds, then we'll have a final boundary survey that shows the agreed to lines and references the, the deed, the boundary line agreement deeds, and there won't be any issues like that. So, by the time we come to final, that'll be resolved, and we won't come to final until it is, so...
Okay.
Should that have been something that we could enter the waivers?
That's a great solution, and I appreciate the owner doing that, I mean, that's a great way to deal with it.
Because it's really tiny amounts, it's not gonna have any effect on the amount it was.
It doesn't really affect us.
Right, yeah, I don't know if that affects us as a planning board, I think that just, it's between you, and it makes it easier to sell the property without an encroachment.
Mm-hmm. That's the way it should get taken care of. That's great.
That's the way it should be, yes.
But thank you, I mean, for letting us know that.
Thanks for coming in.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, lovely. Thank you.
Anybody else want to?
Anymore?
No, I'm just interested because I got, got a letter, and I appreciate your good work, and-
It's really entertaining, some people watch us on TV just for fun, was that good?
Leave, leave to the one viewer.
Yeah, Allison, hi, Allison. And Rick, Rick Rock. I know who watches us. All right, fantastic.
All right, that's good, I think we can probably close this public informational meeting.
Okay.
And I don't think we have any, anything else for, for Jim.
We don't need to make a motion to close it, do we? Or do we?
The pre-application, you can do that if you want, maybe, motions to-
Just the date of the next-
Well, yeah, we need to figure out the review.
You weren't scheduled for, your next regularly scheduled meeting would be two weeks from the twenty, what's the?
Twenty.
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 That does not work for Jim, or-
Right, we're not gonna have those agreements done by then, I don't believe.
Right, and it didn't sound like the twenty-seventh either.
Right. Because we have to submit two weeks ahead.
Right.
Then it would be July fourth.
Which we're not gonna do.
Not gonna work for me.
Sorry, but the planning board is not showing up on July fourth.
July eighteenth would be.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Okay, that's-
That's doable.
I didn't like July eleventh.
Create the same timing issue that-
I think this would be the first to do.
We would have to submit by July third, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, the fifteen days.
That way you can enjoy your holiday, 'cause you'll already be done with your work.
Right.
Yeah. And-
So, July eighteenth will be the final approval?
Yeah, subdivision plan.
So...
Mark brought up an interesting point, though, maybe we should check to see if there's a deadline for submission.
Jim, are you aware of any, off the top of your head, in our-
I'm pretty sure it's two weeks, I remember that it was twenty-one days for pre-app.
Well-
It's fifteen days for submission.
But do you have to do, do you have to act on it within a certain number of days from-
Approval of the pre-app.
Of the pre-app, yeah. And I don't know, off the top of my head.
That's always been on my mind.
My pay grade.
It's minor subdivision.
I don't know, if I was working on a project right now.
I've lost my page, I don't have it.
You lost your page, which page number?
It's, um, Article five in the subdivision ordinance, and I took it out to copy it and-
Submitted five days prior, plan we're meeting didn't wish to be heard.
There's a lot of subdivisions that kinda go on and on and on.
They do.
And take several lines.
I don't see any, anything in here that talks about-
Getting close to it.
I don't see anything, and this is just page fifteen of the subdivision plan review, Article five, minor subdivision, final plan review, there's nothing in there except about the fifteen days prior of the plan board meeting that he needs to submit, so...
It's about making sure we have enough time to review it before it comes, right, within a month, that's-
I think we're good there.
No any harm.
We're good there.
Does that mean that that's our next planning board meeting, or does it just mean that nothing else has come that needs to be dealt with yet?
Well, nothing that needs to be dealt with, I actually am, have family in from out of town and taking the week of that twentieth off, so, I am not going to be here.
June twentieth?
June twentieth.
Okay.
You guys are more than welcome to meet with Jeannie's expert guidance.
I don't know what we'd do without you.
I'm sure you could do a lot.
Anybody have any ordinances they wanna write?
I mean, there is some-
It's our time, you know, it's our chance.
Let's have a play. Just, when are you gonna like have us back here next, that's-
I mean, there are some things I'd like to, I mean, I still gotta start working on, and I haven't unfortunately been able to do it. Spent some time on the dwelling units in the downtown zones, on the lot size that we talked about prior.
That's on for tonight, right?
No, we're not doing it tonight, I'm sorry.
But that was on the list for tonight, yeah.
Was on the list, but it's, I, yeah, I'm not prepared to do that today.
Everybody thinks you're working too hard anyway, so, I think it's good you can-
And lighting ordinance, I will say that some are interested in us looking at, having a, looking at our lighting standards.
And we'd hashed out a basic draft.
We did, yes.
Do we want to bring that to everybody to-
To review?
Is that the next stage?
Do you wanna maybe just try to have a meeting amongst yourselves and talk about lighting on the twentieth?
Did you get to the point where there is an actual draft?
I, I have a draft done on lighting.
Jeremy has, yeah, I mean, unless it can get sent out to everybody on the board to review at home.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's not a huge amount of comment. I'm always willing to show up for a meeting, right, that's, time's blocked out, but if there's no reason to have a meeting-
I'm on that there's no reason to have a meeting.
If there's no good reason to have a meeting, then let's not run.
Let's say we're not gonna have a meeting on June twentieth unless something comes up in the meantime that needs to be heard on the twentieth, which-
And you'll let us know-
For, I mean, Rockport fans, it's Rick Bates's retirement party, so...
On June twentieth?
On the twentieth. So, I just assume I have a meeting?
Isn't that when Jazz in June is on as well, when's that?
All right.
I'll go listen to Jazz.
So, right now, we'll just plan for July, what was it, eighteen?
Eighteenth.
Eighteen.
July eighteenth, potentially, that's our next meeting.
So, that's-
Yeah, you got a big, long vacation, you got a month-long vacation from us, so...
Unless something comes up.
Yeah, unless something comes up. I will have some, that'll give me time to at least, maybe we can talk about lighting at that meeting and review a draft, and then also maybe review some lot size dwelling units in the downtown core for that.
This is the information, who, who else in town is getting involved in lighting now?
No one, it's just the planning board, the energy committee had talked about it, and they talked about it-
They the ones behind this new streetlight?
They are, they are, but street lighting is different from our lighting standards in our site plan or zoning ordinance. They tried to, at the select board meeting the other night, they tried to bring lighting up, and they wanted to be involved in that, and they were directed that lighting standards in the zoning ordinance is not an energy committee issue, and that the planning board and, and I will be working on that, not the energy committee.
Okay.
Okay.
They're, they're welcome to attend.
Yes, and I invited them to attend and all that, and I'm sure there, a couple of them will attend, but it's not a energy committee issue, it's a zoning, a zoning and land use issue.
So, do we, on, on the day when we actually discuss that, do we want to have that open to the public?
All of our meetings are, you know, we can-
Do we need to send something out to the relevant people who might want to come and-
Those relevant people will be well aware of the meeting.
They'll know that we're having the meeting and will show up.
I will let them know.
Again, I'd rather have people who have an interest show up and tell us what they think.
Yep.
At the time, right?
Yep. And there are a couple people from the energy committee will likely be here for that.
Okay.
So, to back up on, on the other question we had here, determining, a determination regarding a public hearing, we're not gonna have another public hearing, we're just gonna have the final hearing for this subdivision on July eighteenth.
On July eighteenth, correct.
Okay, just to clarify all that.
Yep.
So, do you, now you- We get all the agreement stuff taken care of by July third, and I can submit everything.
Correct, it may be then out and done.
It goes out further, yeah.
It would go out further if we don't, I would think we would, but, same.
Lawyers.
Yeah.
This is the planning board?
What's that?
The, the corrected deeds?
Oh, well, we're gonna have to, I mean, you're not gonna finalize a plan that until that boundary change.
Reported, yeah.
Yeah.
So, now you wanna vote that you determined not to hold a public hearing?
Okay.
Right, and that's what we were gonna do after we heard from the public, no public is spoken except for-
One of the reasons that it gives you to hold one is the degree of public interest.
All right, so I make a motion, no, you can make the motion, go on, you're the lead, okay?
No, no.
No, you shot me down last time, you're it.
I move that the informational hearings serve as the public hearing, and therefore no need for a formal public hearing on this application.
Pre-application.
Yeah, and I would say it wasn't a public inform, public information hearing that this, yeah, public information session suffices to get public input.
To get public input.
I'll second that. So, nice. All those in favor?
There was, there has been interest on this, on this project, hasn't there, based on one meeting that was here that I saw several people, some of whom I know?
Yeah, and there-
What have you heard from them, anything?
Um, the, one gentleman, I don't know his name, he was in the office actually yesterday.
Built a new property?
Yes, renovated that house, right, that's not a new one, that he renovated, I believe.
No, it's new.
That was a new, that was, that was a vacant lot, yeah.
Okay, fair, sorry, sorry, you guys have been here longer than me. Yeah, so he's well aware of this meeting tonight, he was in here yesterday and talked with, with Jeannie about this, so he, he knew it was today.
Okay.
And I think his, I think his issue is really not so much about the subdivision plan, it's about the uses and the zoning of the property.
The road.
So, yeah, I, I, my gut says that's why he's probably not here, because this is really a subdivision of just creating, you know, putting two lot lines on one lot to make three, and not really about uses that are coming, uses that are contemplated. It's his, I think his concern is the zoning of that area.
Is the case that these can be fairly easily undone?
Excuse me?
This can be undone?
What can be undone?
The line, the lots can be merged again if they're-
They can be merged again, I mean, if someone wants to buy the whole parcel, yeah.
Deeds, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, you know, I don't know where you're at.
Comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like everybody's been given good notice.
Yeah, and we're just drawing, again, we're just drawing lines on a map-
Right.
At this moment, I mean, there may, there's plenty of opportunity for review down the road.
I think the impacts on neighbors and the impacts downstream are the one, are the, are the issues,